No, but let me share it on NBC page.
Yes, yes.
So in exactly one minute, you could go and start, exactly one minute. Thirty seconds, thirty seconds.
Huh?
Excuse me, you have Vision 75 video by chance?
Um, no.
No? Alright, um, let me see what color language you have, what you've shown here.
Oh. N C.
You want, you have the opportunity, that data?
Yeah? Nick, Nick. Three, two, one, go.
Briefly, ladies and gentlemen, could I have your attention please? Could I have your attention please all over the back, please take your seat, we're about to start officially. We have ample seats to the front, in the front row tables, so you can take a way up here. On behalf of the NBC New York chapter, I welcome you to this evening's tongue hall. And we thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. I see your interest in our country, Grenada, Caracu, Pitymatnik. Just last night, we had our chapter elections to elect an executive to run the chapter for the next couple of years. And we have among ourselves here, the executive members, I'll call it random. I see our assistant treasurer, this Lynn Alexander. One of our floor members is Marcell Joseph. Another floor member is Estella Charles. In the back, we have our treasurer, Peter Cox. Another floor member at the back, Sister Helen Lewis, and a stand-up producer who like. And our P R O running around, Brother Michael Roberts, right here. Right, our secretary, Sister Amanda Taylor T. Lawa. And who is present, I know our deputy chair. Right, our, another floor member, Sister Sharon Dwyer, where is she? In the kitchen, yeah, some of us like to be in the kitchen entertaining and serving, so there was, there was Sister Sharon. The deputy chair, Sister Denise Roberts is not feeling top, she worked so hard yesterday. So she wasn't very able to make it, she has to stay and make sure that all the things go away. And our deputy P R O is away. It does happen that they scheduled this event for the weekend at a time when he was supposed to be away. Did I miss anyone? Oh, our Assistant Secretary, Sister Bernadette Lyons, is hanging out somewhere in Grandville right now, good for her. Yes, our Deputy P R O is Brother Cecil Delphon, he's on the kitchen, yeah. And I think we're covered everyone, you all first. Oh, oh, sorry, yes. My name is Nick Cox, I'm the Chair of the NBC New York Chapter. So we welcome you all and all. This evening, we have presented us two members from the National Executive in Grenada. Our General Secretary, Brother Andy Williams. Also, the M P for the Great South, that we call. Another round of applause for the Great South. And our Member of Parliament for St. George's Northeast, Brother Ron Redhead. Okay. Because they came up to participate in the elections and meet with us as the started the executive, they decided just yesterday, just before noon, that it was a good idea to take this opportunity to meet with the general public. That's why you just got this message that late that we're gathering here today. So, without further ado, since it's already past six thirty, we ask Brother Ron Redhead to come and address you all. Brother Redhead, a round of applause.
Thank you very much, Brother Nick, newly-minted Chairman of the NBC New York Chapter. I want to start off first by recognizing the fact that this meeting in particular was planned on short notice. As short as I am. We had to decide essentially whether we would leave New York, as we did last year when Hurricane Barrel came knocking on the doors of Caracu, Pitymatnik and Notarva, Toma. And we came up for the government to allow, we didn't get to do it. But today, we want to, as they would say back home, start up on a good foot with the year. So in visiting for the chapter elections, we thought it very important to also do this engagement with you. And to have that ability to have a question and answer segment. Today in particular, we want to spend some time speaking to you on the budget. Many of you, in terms of your own experience, would have understood the budget, the process, et cetera, et cetera. But we must never take it for granted that the engagement must never underscore its importance. And I say this because oftentimes leaders do stop. But the question is why? The question is, what do we hope to achieve? What do we believe we should achieve in terms of the grand development of Grenada, Caracu, Pitymatnik? And so the budget discussion, while the budget was held a few weeks ago, the budget discussion must continue because it is essentially a budget that is not just for now, but the future. So you could understand it from that aspect. So as mentioned, I want to spend some time now talking to that person. And to say to you that today, we stand at a threshold of a new era. A future of limitless potential, unity and innovation to propel us forward. Imagine a Grenada where every citizen drives, business flourishes and our communities are built.
And by the generations to come. The twenty twenty five budget is not just a document, but a covenant of transformation. And it captures the essence of the transition from the old to the new. Breaking the chain of the past and embracing progressive vision of the future. This evening, I want to speak to you about a budget theme in particular and narrow it down to the question of Vision seventy five. So Grenada, ladies and gentlemen, now has a plan. But most importantly, there is now a clear roadmap on how that plan will be laid out and implemented throughout the length and breadth of Caracu, Pitymatnik and Grenada. And it's important that we put that into context and perspective. Because oftentimes, anybody could create a plan, anybody could come up with aspects of a vision, that's very easy to do. But the question is, can we implement it? Do we have the capacity? Can we move the things that we need to do in place to be able to get that functioning? And that is the most important question, and we hope that our discussions this evening could answer as we go along. So we must confront today's challenges head on. And this is important if we are to realize that future. Our economy, though resilient, demands diversification to break free from dependency and promote self-sufficiency and self-reliance. Our healthcare and education systems require modernization to empower people. Our infrastructure needs revitalization to connect communities and drive the business activity and commerce that we need to push Grenada's economy forward. And if we ought to do anything significant in Grenada, if we're talking about factories, if we're talking about building out those structures and infrastructure and buildings, we must address our high energy costs and the concerns around the regulatory framework. So we're going to discuss a little about that from my vantage point. I wanted to play a video for you, but in the absence of not having the video, we will move on. I am certain that many of you would have seen Vision seventy five video sometime last year or year before. Right, the government was deliberate in terms of putting that forward altogether so that people could understand where we are going. So I'm going to discuss a few areas, namely the economic outlook in Grenada for twenty twenty five, healthcare, education, housing and renewable energy. Today Grenada's economic outlook in twenty twenty five remains strong and is growing. The GDP is estimated at a positive four point one percent, notwithstanding the passage last year of Hurricane Barrel. Unemployment is at twelve percent. And the goal of this NBC administration is to see Grenada achieve a single-digit unemployment rate. We don't know when we're going to get there, but ladies and gentlemen, that is our goal at this present moment. The healthcare situation in Grenada is indeed not where it ought to be. And we must say it bluntly, like the Minister of Health has said, we are not satisfied. But in saying we are not satisfied, doesn't mean that we're not going to do anything about it. It means that coming into the situation, seeing the state to which our healthcare is, we must do something about it. We can't sweep it under the carpet and we can't try to engage only in blaming past and looking for a reason why it is not good. We have to do something about it now. And so the government is taking steps to modernize and to efficiently, key words, manage Grenada's healthcare delivery system. So on the whole question of national health insurance, on the whole question of a new teaching hospital, these are the things that we have been doing. As many of you would appreciate, we have started the process of gathering the data. And the hospital, it just slipped my mind right now, let me see if some of you are listening to Grenada. The government of Grenada has partnered with, excellent, excellent, all you working, all you working, all you working. So the government partnered with Monk Sinai. And so that assessment, the initial assessment of the health sector has been completed. So we are satisfied that while we know we need to make some very strong decisions, they must not be made on the basis of emotionalism and on the basis of what this person say versus what that person says. It must be made on the basis of data and information. So I'm certain you would agree with that. So that's where we're going in terms of how we are going to tackle the healthcare crisis that we have. The other thing is that the government has been able to put forward a management team. Because like many healthcare systems throughout the Caribbean and region, the issue is not so much of the availability of nurses and doctors. But a nurse and a doctor is not a manager. So the problem with our healthcare delivery system is a lack of genuine management. Now, crisis presents two things, one, you'd have an opportunity succeed or you'd have an opportunity to fail. And so if we dwell only on what the difficulties are in terms of failure, we will not see the opportunity to succeed. So while we need to fix the loophole of our nurses leaving rapidly, we also need to fix the loophole of the management of the healthcare system. So that's the other area and aspect that we see. The other area is that we have already secured the lands for what is known as, let me see if you're all listening to Grenada again, project. Excellent. And now, that is going to be revolutionary. It's important. Because when we talk about healthcare, the element of the infrastructure, the element of the human resource and also the element of what kind of healthcare is applicable to Grenada is critical. And that's why we invested so much with the discussions with Monk Sinai. So we know now where we need to go. We know the capacity we need from the infrastructure standpoint. And we must now know how we will use and build the human resource capacity to get the outcome that we desire. So that is key. The second area is the question, or rather the third area is question of education. So the goal of the administration is to modernize the education system and ensure that it is diverse and accessible to Grenadians both home and abroad. We need to understand just how important the education is in terms of eradicating poverty. When we talk about its accessibility, what we did was to introduce the question of free tuition. Free tuition is only one step to our goal of achieving free education. And this is outlined in Vision seventy five. And it's important that we talk about that. Because, let's face it, many of you received scholarships, some of you went all over the world to study. And then after studying, come back home to Grenada, some of you may have been bonded. They can't pay you for the amount of years that you put in and the sacrifices. And so oftentimes, when we give the scholarships, the importance of those scholarships that we are giving, the importance of the investments that we are making in education should be so well thought out that it is aligning with the job market that we need. You can't give a man a scholarship, let's say for example, to build a podium. And we need that back home in Grenada. Then it doesn't make any sense, I'm certainly agree with me on that. So we need to be deliberate, we need to be intentional in terms of the curriculum that we want to invest in from an education standpoint. And we need to ensure that the people that we are turning out, that they are going to be productively engaged back into the Grenadian economy. So that is key in terms of how we see the education system. The other area I want to touch on briefly is the question of housing. The administration, ladies and gentlemen, is keen on ensuring that housing in Grenada becomes affordable and is constructed resilient to the elements. Now, many of you would have heard about Project Five Hundred. This is going well. We expect to complete the seven or so models of Project Five Hundred, utilizing, and a key thing to be able to reduce the cost of the home is that of the materials used to construct the homes. Many of you in New York know about different materials that are used for the homes. And so we honestly believe that as Grenadians, you would be able to contribute in terms of informing government as to what we need to do back home to be able to build resilient homes, but to ensure that we use materials that are cheaper so that the cost of homes or constructing a home in Grenada could reduce significantly. And an ordinary man or woman, youth or senior could be able to afford a home. Because there's another issue aside to housing in Grenada, and that is the question of rent. That is something that we have to discuss. And the final area briefly, as I conclude, is renewable energy. Ladies and gentlemen, we aim to diversify the sources and the supply of energy. And we believe it will help to drive the cost down. So it's not just about announcing that we find oil and gas. But as Brother Nas said last tongue hall, it is to determine if we have it, how do we exploit that resource to benefit the nation? And then at the same time, manage our own selves, not to become as how larger Caribbean territories have become with their oil and gas and producing and emitting the carbon, but to ensure that we are responsible as a nation and bridge the finding or discovery, if it is there, of that oil and twinge, twinge, bridge it, sorry, with renewable energy. So the government in this budget will be investing in two projects. Let me just read it out for you so that you get an understanding. So there is a geothermal project for renewable energy right now ongoing in the lovely constituency of St. John in Grenada. I'm certain not many of you know about that. We are allocating three point six million dollars towards ensuring that this becomes a reality. Now, the thing with these investments is that they take a long time to materialize. And so when we talk about having patience, this is the basis to which we speak. It's not to say that we are just going to go into government and be able to do everything immediately. Do this immediately. Some aspects we can implement, the pension in terms of the backlog, the bi-monthly in terms of workers' rights, et cetera. But there are other aspects that we have to take some time out to build and to ensure that when it is built, it is done in a way that everybody can benefit, not just the now or the present, but certainly and most importantly, for the future. And the other area is that we are going to be doing some solar upgrades. The Limler Solar PV Plant in Caracu was severely damaged after Hurricane Barrel. And the government is allocating at least one point six million dollars to be able to restore that. There is another project. Brother Cox is clapping, kayak man, kayak, Kakabawee for Kakabawee. So yes, give him a round of applause for that. And so the other area now is to ensure that our international airport, M B I, Morris Bishop International Airport, is going to be fully outfitted with solar panels. This will significantly reduce the cost of energy down at the airport. And if you heard earlier on, as I come to a close, the ability of Grenada to be able to, or the capacity, sorry, of our energy facility to be able to generate the mega watts to push development in the country is severely limited. And so when we talk about renewable energy, the need to diversify the energy source is probably the number one aspect that would be able to help to drive economic activity. Because if we get rid of the dependence of what we have currently and diversify that, we will be able to do so much more. The laboratories, the factories, the things that we need to roll out, even our schools, the general hospital, the new teaching hospital, even hotels, the investment there, that is being stymied because we do not have the capacity to generate sufficient megawatts of energy to power it. And so when we talk about Vision seventy five, it seeks, ladies and gentlemen, to address those concerns. So that's where we are going with the whole question of our vision. Of course, there are more, but in the interest of time, I'm going to stop here. We will certainly take questions and we look forward to a fruitful evening of debate discussions and so that we can continue to formulate good ideas to help benefit Grenada, Caracu and Pitymatnik. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brother Ron Redhead, Member of Parliament for St. George's Northeast. I, I suspect that you digested what he has said and you're more armed to understand, understanding what's happening in Grenada, to understand how you can participate in helping in the development. So another round of applause for Brother Ron. Our next presenter, and remember there will be a chance to ask, answer questions at the end. Our next presenter is Brother Andy Williams, who is the Member of Parliament for St., for the Great South, officially known as St. George's South. He's also the Minister of Mobilization, Implementation and Transformation. Yes. The one who is responsible to, responsible for making sure that things do happen as they're supposed to be in Grenada, Caracu and Pitymatnik. So a round of applause for that. So we welcome to the podium Brother Andy Williams.
Thank you very much, Brother Cox. And good evening to everyone. Brother Cox, again, you tell me, last night the chapter was vibrant. You tell me when I come here tonight and I say good evening, I will get a warm, big good evening. Good evening to everyone. Thank you very much. First of all, I want to congratulate the NBC New York Chapter on a successful election. Let's give them a round of applause. And this afternoon, I got to, to meet the new executive. And it was a wonderful meeting. We were able to highlight some areas on the way forward and how we can move forward in a more collective unit and with purpose. And in anything you do, you have to do with a great purpose. That's the only way you will get true results. And Mr. Cox and the new executive, I have the utmost confidence in you in moving this chapter forward. The New York chapter is the most vibrant chapter and is the one that everyone look up to. So it's important for you to lead by example, and I trust you will do just that. Brother Redhead, you spoke about the unemployment rate in Grenada. And you are correct, the last survey we did, the rate was about twelve percent. But I can tell you, I can bet you that the rate is already in single digits. Why? Because we cannot get workers. Let me repeat, we cannot get workers. We have Caracu to build back, and the reason why it's taken a lot of time is because we cannot get workers. We have St. Patrick's to build back after Hurricane Barrel. And the reason why it's taken so long is because we cannot get workers. So when you hear some playing games politically, telling you about Grenada hard, it's a lie. If you're not working in Grenada, it's because you don't want work. What, what we have done, what I have done, I've gone to the blocks, to the guys who smoking and drinking on the block, take them out. And some of them are now painters, they have, they have their little company. And they are working now hiring people to feed themselves, feed their families and also people who are looking for employment. So we are on the way up. And when you see these young, these young guys from the Limes and Granas Valley, they coming out and actually working, not begging, working. And if the screen was up, I would show you some of the work that they are doing in Grenada. As a matter of fact, after this meeting, I have a nice picture to show you, Ron and I was looking at it last night. And they were working on some house and they paint and everything, and the job was just so magnificent. You know, we will come down on these guys and saying that they are lazy and all these things. But sometimes, if the system doesn't provide a way for, for them, they will fall along the wayside. And it's easy for us to get caught up in the politics and to tear down one another. NBC trying to tear down N P, N B trying to tear down NBC, and what's happened to the country? What's happened to our youth? You know, and sometimes I was making a point today that power is not about saying that you have the power. The more power you have is the more you have to serve. Right? The more power you have is the more responsibility you have to serve. And the more responsibility you have as a politics to your people. The last time we were here to do a tongue hall was in June. See Ron laughing. But while, when we left Grenada, I think we left Grenada on the Friday, and we saw some little bad weather. By the Saturday, we had a hurricane, from bad weather to hurricane. On the Sunday, coming straight On the Sunday, coming straight out of Grenada. Kevin got so scared, Kevin left us in a hotel where we called Kevin, wait a, in Grenada, or I'm both going to Karakoo. And we are still at the hotel. After barrel, we were so, you know, concerned that, that we wanted to go, to get out. We wanted to charter a flight for fifty thousand dollars, US dollars, to go, to go back to Grenada, but it just wasn't viable. And we got back on a Tuesday. And I remember after going back, we were able to mobilize people coming out to Saint Patrick's and Karakoo to do their cleanup and so. Because sometimes when you have a, you know, a natural disaster like that, the, you know, the best thing to do is to try to get rid of the memories. So we had the Osprey, we had the Osprey going to Karakoo every weekend, Saturday and Sunday. And people were coming out volunteering, coming out to help in the effort to, to, to clean up. And I remember once upon a time, we went by plane, my ministry. And on the way back, I remember vividly, I was sitting at the airport in Karakoo. And after witnessing the devastation that a storm had left in its wake, I was feeling rather despair. And I thought, how can we build back in a better manner? Build back in a way that the same would not repeat itself. And to me like, as if it was fate, I was right there with an architect, a guy who draw plan and so. And I had a, a thought in my head for a long time. And I said to him, can we build a structure where you can have the concrete frame and you can board it up? So the concrete frame provides the strength and the board, rabbit and spring, it's a little cheaper. So we can mix the, you know, the strength with the cost against something good. He like, Minister, I won't try. By the next day, he gave me a design. And when I saw it, I said, this will be called Project Build Back Better. It was right there in that moment that a concept of Build Back Better was born. We envision a structure that combine the warmth and familiarity of a boulders with the strength and resilience of a concrete frame. We propose a carpet roof that will make it hurricane resistant, one that will protect families when the winds came howling. And we knew it wouldn't be easy, but we also knew it was necessary. And there, and here today, we have completed, on near completion, I'm talking about from October, because that's when we finished the first pilot, and we are in March. We have completed over one hundred and thirty Build Back Better houses for the people of Grenada, Karakoo and Peti Martinique. But that's not all. We have also been able to repair over a hundred homes of families who are affected by Hurricane Barrel. And through Build Back Better, we, we have created more than just homes. We have created opportunities. Over seventy-five contractors, including builders, painters, plumbers, and, and electricians have been employed and given a chance to work, contribute and support their families. But more than that, we have given them an opportunity to grow. So what we did, if you have a contractor building the house, he was not the one doing the plumbing. And the one doing the plumbing is not the one doing the painting. And the one doing the painting is not the one doing the, the, the electrical work on the house. In that way, we provided work for four different contractors on one house. And that was done intentionally so that we can create employment for our people. And notice, we did not go outside and bring in people with all kind of different methods to do the work. We use local firms, local people to bring benefit to our own people. But it didn't stop there. What we did is that we know that sometimes construction workers and fishermen, they work hard. I always say, if a fisherman tell you a pound of fish is ten dollars, pay for it. Because they may go on a side here and spend a lot of weeks and so on, see you and coming back, I can't do that. Construction workers, they are known for, let me see how much, how many you have inside here? They're known for when they get paid, you go by ten if a woman, all the money gone. But what we did is that we worked with our local contractors. We worked with our financial institutions. And every one of them who got a contract, you're able to sign them up with a financial institution. So the contract went through the, the institution. What we did also is that their institution provided a savings for them. So when the money passed through, some of it would have gone to a saving. But also, we are helping them to build themselves, letting the money pass through the institution. So later on, when they want to grow, they have no problem. You see, if you do your business cash, the bank has no records, no trace. If you pass it through the bank, then you have record and you have trace. So it's not just about building back the walls or board, it's about building people, and that's what we are focused on. So the Build Back Better is not just about construction, it's about rebuilding lives, creating jobs and providing a brighter future for all of us. It's about resilience, it's about strength, and most importantly, it's about community. As we move forward, we continue to face challenges. But with each challenge, we also find new opportunities. And together, we will keep building back stronger, more resilient and more united than ever before. Also, besides homes, what was affected again was farmers. And as we all remember, on July first, barrel brought the impact that left many of our farmers and future folks struggling. The damage was real, and it was heart wrenching to see so many of our people affected. But just like in the past, we stood tall and united. We began the journey of recovery together. The government of Grenada wasted no time stepping in to assist who needed it most. We allocated thirty-two point four million dollars to provide much needed support to our farmers and fisherfolks. Let me give you this in, in context. The budget for twenty twenty-five is thirty-two million dollars when it comes to agriculture. After barrel, we put in the hands of farmers thirty-two million dollars. So in essence, we put the whole twenty twenty-five budget in agriculture into the hands of farmers after barrel. Tell me this is not a government that cares about the farmers. Looking ahead, we are committed to making sure that agriculture is not just about recovery, it's about striving. So in the twenty twenty-five budget, we have allocated thirty-two million dollars to support and grow the agriculture sector. This is a significant investment because we believe that agriculture is not just the backbone of our economy, it is the live blood of our economy. Our farmers are the heartbeat of Grenada. And we will continue to ensure that they have resources and tools needed to succeed, to flourish and to continue feeding our nation. And speaking of striving, let's talk about the Merible Tissue Laboratory. Just last Friday, yesterday, we proudly opened the State of the Art Facility. And this isn't just a building with walls and windows, it is a game changer. It is a way to ensure that we reduce ninety percent, the ninety percent of the food that we currently import. Folks, we import approximately ninety percent of our food. But we are no longer relying on what comes from overseas. We are setting ourselves up to grow of what we eat at home. And that is why we launched the Merible Tissue Laboratory. Now, I know some of you might be thinking, or backroom might be thinking, the minister, does it mean that I cannot get my snacks and so from overseas again? Right, I say, don't worry. While we are focusing on local food production, we, we won't be taking away the treats. However, we, we will be making sure that we are less dependent on what's coming from abroad and that we can feed ourselves in a sustainable manner, no matter what happens in the world. And it, and it doesn't stop there. We are working closely with the private sector to promote agri processing, transforming our raw materials and products into finished goods, creating jobs and adding value to our produce. Imagine the possibilities, I tell you. The sky will be the limit if we can together as a country achieve this. Now, let's shift gears for a minute. Because in Grenada, our connection to the sea is just as important as our connection to the land. In fact, our geographical space is more than ten times larger on the sea than on land. So it's only fitting that we now have a dedicated ministry of blue economy and marine resources and thankful for the vision of our Prime Minister. I'm excited to announce that we have already allocated over six million dollars to this new ministry. Why? Because we have to take our marine environment seriously. Our oceans and seas are our future, whether it's fishing, tourism or new industries like marine biotechnology. We need to protect our waters and use them responsibly for generations to come. And here's the thing, the more we, we protect our seas, the more we fish, develop and strive. But we can't do that if we don't put in the effort to secure and protect these invaluable resources. As we look, as we look to the future, let's remember that we are not just building what was lost. We are building something stronger, smarter and most sustainable. And every step we take, whether it's in agriculture, agri processing, marine resources, is a step toward a better, more prosperous Grenada for all. Brothers and sisters, Grenada has always been known for its natural beauty, rich culture and warm hospitality. And it's no surprise that tourism continuously be a vital part of our economy. Today, I'm proud to announce that the government of Grenada is investing over twenty-seven million dollars in the tourism sector. This investment is not just a number, it's a clear reflection of our commitment to building a sustainable, vibrant and world-class tourism industry that can benefit all Grenadians. Part of this investment will go into community tourism, which focuses on ensuring that our local communities are not just participants in tourism, but active contributor state. We want to ensure that tourism benefits all of Grenada. From the beaches to the mountains, from the cities to the rural villages, this will empower local entrepreneurs, create jobs and spread the benefits of tourism across the entire country. Community tourism is about creating authentic cultural-rich experiences for our visitors, while ensuring that our locals are in the economic benefits. By supporting and showcasing the diversity of Grenada, we can ensure that tourism strives not just in the big resorts, but in every corner of our nation. In addition to community tourism, we are also focusing on enhancing our national heritage and natural attractions. National parks and the key, and, and other key sites are being upgraded to improve visitor experiences and, and preserve our environment. Our National Heroes Park, a national art gallery, will receive significant enhancements, ensuring that these historical and cultural landmarks are not only preserved for future generations, but also provide a space where both local and visitors can experience the richness of our history and art. These are not just buildings or open spaces, they are part of our identity, our legacy. And through these upgrades, we will ensure that these sites serve as educational, cultural and tourist attractions that celebrate the stories and achievements of Grenada's heroes. And let's not forget the hotel sector. We have seen consistent growth from twenty twenty-two to present, with hotels across the island reporting higher occupancy rates increase by visitors' interest. This is a direct reflection on the work we have been doing to improve the tourism infrastructure and ensure that Grenada is not only a destination of choice, but a destination people return to again and again. The growth in our, in our hotel sector is proof that we are on the right track. More visitors are coming to Grenada to experience our culture, our people and our beautiful landscapes, and more hotels are seeing success because of it. This growth means that more jobs, more businesses thriving and a stronger economy for Grenada. I want to take the time to thank every one of you. Yes, you contribute also in the diaspora. For our local communities, our tourism operators, junior judges, oh, sorry, junior, sorry. And all those who worked tirelessly to make Grenada the special place it is. Your dedication, your warmth and your hospitality are the reasons that our tourism industry continues to strive. The future of Grenada tourism is bright and together, we will continue to build a tourism sector that benefits everyone while keeping our island's beauty and the spirit intact for future generations. Brothers and sisters, I stand before you today to share the government's commitment to the future of our beautiful island of Karakoo and Peti Martinique. These islands are not just an integral part of our nation. They are the home to our families, our traditions, our culture. That is why in the upcoming year, in twenty twenty-five, we are making a significant investment in Karakoo and Peti Martinique. And I'm talking about over forty-four million dollars. This will help to strengthen the infrastructure, support development and improve the quality of life for all who call these islands home, like Brother Cox. We understand that the housing sector plays a crucial role in, in the stability and well-being of our citizens. That is why we have allocated one million dollars to the Housing Repair Program in Karakoo and Peti Martinique. This funding will support families whose homes were affected by barrel, ensuring they have safe, comfortable, resilient homes. The program will, will provide direct assistance to those in need and empower families to rebuild and recover, making sure they can enjoy a sense of security in their own homes. In addition to housing, we recognize that good infrastructure is key. In addition to housing, we recognize that good infrastructure is key to the economic and social development of our islands. That is why we have set aside four million dollars for road construction in Karakou and Pele Matne. Our roads are the lifeblood of our islands. They connect families, businesses, health centers to add. This investment will repair, improve, and modernize key roadways, ensuring smoother travel, better connectivity, and safer transportation for everyone. We all remember the challenges brought by Hurricane Barrel and how it left a trail of destruction across the islands. To continue the recovery efforts, we are allocating an additional nine million dollars specifically for Hurricane Barrel repairs in the islands of Karakou and Pele Matne. These funds will go towards rebuilding essential infrastructure, restoring critical services, and supporting our communities as they fully recover. We are committed to ensuring that Karakou and Pele Matne are not only restored, but are stronger and more resilient in the face of future challenges. But our vision for Karakou and Pele Matne is not just about recovery. It's about building for the future. We have several exciting transformative projects lined up for 2025, all designed to enhance the island's economy, infrastructure, and cultural heritage. Let me name a few. The Paradise Beach Enhancement Project will revitalize one of our most beautiful natural treasures, transforming it into a premier tourist destination that will bring new opportunities for local businesses and create jobs in the hospitality sector. The Hillsborough Development Project is designed to modernize the beauty of the capital of Karakou, improving infrastructure, public spaces, and services to ensure that Hillsborough remains a vibrant and attractive place, both for residents and visitors. The Bella Heritage Site Development Project will preserve and showcase our rich history and culture, turning Bella into a place of education, tourism, and pride for the people of Karakou and Pele Matne. The Night Landing Project will enhance our airport infrastructure, enabling safe landings and improving accessibility to the islands. The Limley Farm Project. The Windward Fish Center will support our fisherfolk by providing a dedicated space for fishing activities, processing, and distribution, helping to strengthen the fishing industry and improve livelihoods for families in that community. These projects, along with other important initiatives, are all part of our holistic vision to ensure that Karakou and Pele Matne flourish economically, socially, and culturally by investing in these islands. The people, infrastructure, and industries. We are creating a foundation for sustainable growth and a prosperous future. The government of Grenada is committed to ensuring that no part of our nation is left behind. With over forty-four million dollars invested in Karakou and Pele Matne for 2025, we are sending a clear message. We are building the future together. The investments we are making today will create jobs, improve living conditions, enhance infrastructure, and strengthen our communities. But it's not just about the projects or the money. It's about empowering the people of Karakou and Pele Matne, giving them the tools they need to strive and building a foundation for a brighter future for generations to come. Together, we will continue to move forward, stronger, united, and focus on building a better Grenada. One island, one people, one future. Let me highlight some of the achievements our government made in 2024. Just a few. Or let me just say in the two and a half years that we've been in office, just over two and a half years. I remember before elections, the other side was saying that if they pay the pension, the country will go bankrupt, or such services will be cut. And kumbaya, kumbaya, kumbaya. We came into office and we paid the pension. And sometimes I hear them saying that they left us a pregnant treasury. I could tell them that the treasury is stronger today than it was when we came in office. I remember someone calling our leader at the time, wasn't prime minister yet, Don, because he said that we're going to pay by monthly salary. But guess what? We came in and people are getting paid twice a month now. Just some weeks ago, the new leader of the opposition was saying that Grenadians, we make Grenadas think that they are getting the same salary twice every month. So in a sense, let me explain. If you're working for two thousand dollars a month, she said that we make people think that they were getting two thousand dollars on the fifteenth and two thousand dollars on the end of the month. Now, this year, I'm not laughing at it because this year is insulting to every Grenadian. We are not stupid. I remember again, we removed the tuition fee for Nilo and Tamsisi, which is eight, ten or so. And in doing so, the opposition was telling us, you know, all sorts of things against it. And I'm saying, if the cost to a parent is maybe a thousand dollars, and eighty percent of that is tuition, and we are not taking out that from it, how can that be a bad idea? Let's go again. Cost-effective travel between Grenada and Karakou. When we came in, we immediately consulted an airline. I know we have a ninety-seater going back and forth to Karakou weekly. Let's go again. Establishment of the creative economy. That came into being when we came in office. And we know the importance of the creative economy. This was some of the items we did in 2024 and before that. But what I want to focus on is the train moving forward. And let's, me give some things to look forward to. But I already spoke about, we are looking at a four-point-one percent increase in GDP growth for the year 2025. That's something to be proud about. As an administration, we have invested over three million dollars in geothermal energy and solar upgrades for 2025. In addition, we have allocated ten million dollars for Project Five Hundred. I will talk more about that during the questions and answers. As an administration, we have allocated fifteen million dollars for the Housing Soft Loan Program to help the ordinary citizens who cannot help themselves with housing. As an administration, we have allocated approximately twenty-three-point-six million dollars in healthcare. Six-point-nine million dollars for the blue economy. Forty-four million dollars for Karakou and Pele Matne. So the two million dollars for agriculture. One-hundred-and-eighty-three million dollars for education. If you take a tour now to some of the schools, you will see the poor condition they are in. And it didn't happen yesterday. So part of that budget is to ensure that we do construction to bring back the schools where it's supposed to be. One-point-five million dollars for free tuition program. Seven-point-five million dollars in concessions for families after Hurricane Barrel. New police headquarters. And the nearly completed works on various other police stations. Police stations were neglected for years, folks. We have a new pay grade for the police officers. Where an average police officer's salary would no increase, approximately seven hundred dollars. I must mention minimum wage. Now, the no opposition, when we wanted to increase the minimum wage, was telling the same people, it's a bad idea. Because if we increase it, the companies will force to kick them out and they will lose their job. Imagine you're in the US here, working every day, eight-to-a-half shift, for two-hundred-and-fifty US a month. That is what the opposition was telling people. They should grab, grab. You have many workers working for years in a program, not going anywhere. Years in a program, making seven hundred EC dollars a month. We increased the money salaries, when we increased the minimum wage. So no Imani, no one in Grenada is working for under twelve hundred dollars a month. Hello, Grenadians. Our journey towards a brighter, stronger Grenada is well underway. And we need each and every one of you to join us on this transformative path. Whether you are at home or in the diaspora, your contribution matters. Together, we can build the Grenada we all deserve. One that strives, one that grows, and one that prospers. Let us focus on progress. Let me repeat that. Let us focus on progress and ignore the enemies of advancement who seek to divide us. We are stronger when we stand united, working side by side with determination and purpose. The time to act is now. Let us leave behind the naysayers and move Grenada forward with pride, unity, and vision. Together, we will shape our future and build a prosperous Grenada for generations to come. But folks, let us be honest. It will take more than two and a half years to fix what has been broken for over twenty years. So when you hear them saying that healthcare should be fixed with a stroke of a pen, everything should be fixed with a stroke of a pen. Yes, we are not there yet with healthcare, but we are working on it. And they should be ashamed to have all this experience. And letting these little boys come and put them to shame. So I want you to keep this in mind. We are working, but the best is yet to... Thank you very much.
Thank you, brother Andy. Now, how informative was that? Another round of applause. And at this time, we'll ask brother Michael to come and, or PRO, esteemed PRO, to facilitate the questions and answers.
Thank you very much, Comrade Chair. Good night to everybody. And thank brother Ron, brother Andy, for that informative dialogue. So now we come to the nitty-gritty of everything now. Now we are going to have you ask them questions. I do apologize that we don't have two microphones, so we're going to have to use this one. I'm going to walk around and come to you. You don't need to come to me. So you can line up on either side, no, in the middle here, fine, and I'll come to you. Frankie?
At least you remember my name there, buddy. How you doing? Good, 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 good. I am Frankie Mitchell from Leicester, Karakou. How you doing, Andy? How you doing, my man? Good. I, um, I got a sort of, to elaborate on a statement that you made, then I got a question. During the speech, you said that about twenty-four hours prior to burial in Karakou, Tevin got scared. I disagree with that. Highly disagree with that. Because Tevin stayed over at my house. That's right. And I had the opportunity to welcome him here prior to and twenty-four hours later. I had the opportunity to take him to the airport. And I will tell you, about two o'clock, or probably twelve o'clock, he was concerned about his constituency in Karakou. He never went to sleep until about two o'clock. And he got up about four o'clock, and I had to take him to the airport. And I think for some reason, that's a man that is concerned. So the one who is scared, I think is very concerned. Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Now, I heard they mentioned about labor, workmen in Karakou. I think you said that about three or four times. And I think you had a trip to Grenada, and apparently yourself and Tevin was there. I was there with you guys, and you says that it's a possibility you guys should be doing some kind of a bilateral agreement with governments within the Caribbean and getting them workmen to Karakou. Is that still a possibility? Please.
Thank you.
So when I say scared, if someone is scared, they wouldn't be going to. He was scared for Karakou. So you said in to Karakou. So that's what I meant, right? So that's the point. Number one. And number two, yes, we are looking at the possibility. As a matter of fact, one of our Caribbean leaders contacted our prime minister and offered labor to Grenada. But what we want to do first, we want to ensure that we exhaust the call, you know, in Grenada for our people to get involved. Because although we may have to bring in people, we don't want to bring them in. And we have people here who can do the work. So we are making the calls everywhere I go. I'm saying, we need workers. The last talk on Wednesday, we need workers. Come to my office, go to the parliamentary office, we need workers. If you are builder in Grenada now, the easiest thing to get is work. Because we need workers. So if you have folks on the line from Grenada listening to me, if you have families in Grenada, tell them, come check on the other office, come at the MIT office, offer yourself. And I could bet you, if you come today, by Monday, Tuesday, you have work already. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Please.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, Mr. Moderator, I have three questions. Do I ask them? Okay. The first one is on the tourism. Um, I noticed that every, almost every event, large event, is held at the Botanical Gardens in Caracu. I want to know if this is going to continue or if the botanical garden would be restored to what it's supposed to be, a botanical garden? That's the first question on the tourism. Second one is on agriculture. I am from Caracu, as you would understand. As a child, I hear you, now you say that agriculture would be a big thing in Caracu. As a child, we had ponds and wells and big systems, catchment areas that we could have gotten water from. Excuse me. Agriculture depends on water. Yes, soil, but water. Caracu doesn't get a lot of rain for the whole year. What is your plan? Or what is the government's plan for reopening, recommissioning some of these wells, the ponds? And maybe the systems have gone too far. But what is being done water-wise for the agriculture? And the third question is on the education. I have always, I was a teacher for many, many years. I wouldn't say how many. I have always advocated that the government from the first NDC back should bond scholarship people. Because that was the way it was. Now that you are targeting, you're not giving ad hoc scholarships. People are not going and study what they don't know about. You are sending people to study A, B, C, D. Is the government going to bond these people for at least five years so that they give back some of this knowledge to the country, to develop the country rather than staying in America, staying in England, and everywhere else? Thank you.
Okay, well, let me see if I can do justice to your first two questions. And Minister, maybe you'll answer the second one, the third one. All right, so as it relates to tourism in Caracu, yes, the minister in particular has plans to not just use the botanical gardens. And there is a plan that he has mobilized already with the new PS to be able to upgrade the botanical gardens in Caracu-Pitiamatni. That's one. Two, there is already the installation of the underwater sculpture park. That is going to enhance the tourism product for Caracu and Pitiamatni. Thirdly, just last week, I was speaking to Minister and he was giving me a potential update on further discussions that he's going to have. Not so much with the sandals brand originally that we wanted to come. Because again, the same challenge you raised. The question of water, the question of electricity and the island's capacity to be able to sustain large tourism products and companies is very, very difficult. So what he said is that they are looking not so much on the high-end sandals brand, but maybe a moderate or lower-end brand to be able to come to expand the critical thing, the room stock of tourism rooms in the island of Caracu and by extension Pitiamatni. The second area that you spoke about had to do with the question of the water shortage, right? So let's dive into that. I know Nawasa is having a town hall meeting in Caracu-Pitiamatni soon. I don't recall the exact date, but it will be broadcast live. Minister Nawasa and the infrastructure team up there is looking feverishly to see how we can rule out initiatives, notwithstanding the traditional dry season issue, but post-hurricane barrel, the question of the desalination plants. Now, I want to say this and it goes back to how this government sees disasters. When Hurricane Barrel struck and Cabinet sent me up to Caracu, maybe about the two mornings after we returned, the Samaritan Spurs was able to construct a desalination plant throughout. Well, not a, but multiple. So I think there was one at the Turtle Bay end and then there was one at Hills, up at Hillsboro. And so what that was able to do was while we had shortages of water, people were able to use those plants, get water to bathe, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm talking from first-hand experience. Because when you went up, you can't do nothing, so you had to use that. Now, we need to go that route. But the issue in Grenada is all of this bureaucracy. One of the things that this administration did was to break essentially this default monopoly that Nawasa had, where it was self-regulating its own self and also being the one to supply water. That was a mistake that we should not have been making. So we are now introducing a water management unit. Where Nawasa's role is to ensure that it is meeting the standard of water that the people require and are paying for and can supply, do all the things with the desal plant that is necessary. And a management unit manages water resources throughout the entire country. Separating that is going to enhance the ability for Caracu and Pitiamatni to start having a well-regulated water system that hinges on the basis of desalination. So I can tell you this from first-hand because those discussions are ongoing. But these discussions been going on almost thirty years now about the salination plan for Caracu and Pitiamatni. The difference is you have a transformative team and we're going to get the job done. And the art of what Brother Ron has just said that we have procured a second desalination plant for Caracu. So you have one, you have the other. Now you specifically asked about the wells. Yes, no problem, no problem. We heard you loud and clear. I heard you loud and clear. Right? No, I cannot speak to you about the wells and ponds, no. But I can speak to you about the plans we have to increase the water supply in Caracu. And that is why our Prime Minister immediately after burial put things in place to add one more plant for Caracu and Pitiamatni. So that's one. In addition, you mentioned about the bonding. Let me just mention something before we go to the bonding. What we are doing now in the Ministry of Education and the Ministry of Labour combined, we see some people are going to study things and get scholarships for areas that does not really benefit the country. So what we are doing is that we are looking and see what are the areas that we are providing work permits for to see where we have the void. And we will be channeling our scholarships to those areas. If we do that, it means that we can lessen on the amount of people coming outside to get jobs in Grenada. And our people can be the one accessing those jobs. So we are doing that. And yes, at the Cabinet, we have already started to put the heavy roller down on people who, who we give scholarships to and never come back. Right? We have made decisions that where people ask for, you know, a release and we said, no. It's either you pay or you come back. Yeah, so we are putting our foot down on that.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Before I take the question, let me just tell you about a time-honored Grenadian practice. That is the practice of passing the hat. So whatever you can give, give a generous donation to us because we do have some costs. I had asked for the money. So we're going to pass around the hat and we'll continue with the question and answer period. You have a question? Please.
Hi, good evening. I happened to be in Caracu right after Hurricane Barrel. I happened to be in Caracu right after Hurricane Barrel. And I recognized there was an element missing in the post hurricane assistance management, and that was health. I missed some of the presentations, so I don't know what your plans are for health. But I do feel that in Caracu, I don't know in the mainland, there is a need for a lot of health education and a lot of community outreach in health. Because I remember after the hurricane, many people were in shelters. Many people had lost the medications and there was nobody reaching for them. And it took about three weeks before people from the Ministry of Health showed up and was going out. And I know the hospital was damaged. The people were at the clinic in Hillsboro. I know everybody was under pressure. But I feel that some of the staff were not sensitive to the needs of the elderly people. I remember one man dying in somebody else's house because his house was destroyed. And despite approaching them for someone to go and see him or to care for him, nobody went. And there was another gentleman who was old, was in his house, laying down. What they were told that this man needed somebody and nobody from the health department went. People who were in NADMA, who knew about it, happened to rescue him. And I think that is not something that is appropriate. And I'm wondering going forward, what plans are in place for post-disasters in terms of health management? Something we need to examine. Can you give us some insight on that?
Thank you.
Yeah, very good observation and question. And if I'm not mistaken, I think I recalled your face coming up in Caracu after burial in truth. So I know that you're speaking first-hand. Well, let me say this. In speaking with the disaster management managers at the time, post hurricane barrel, we concluded that there is a natural two-week chaos that emerges after every significant disaster. And so the nurses, they themselves were also focused on their homes. Some of them even lost family members. We know that or knew that for a fact. And most of their workplaces were in total destruction. However, what the hurricane barrel experience taught us was that we need to have a disaster plan, not just focusing on if and when the hurricane comes, but what will we do immediately after? And so I want to openly say here, and the minister himself, for Caracu and Pitiamatni, the Honorable Tevin Andrews will talk more about that in the future. But it was almost non-existent in terms of responding to hurricane barrel for Caracu and Pitiamatni. And so essentially, they built it from the ground up. And I want to give the team in Caracu, in particular, the NADMA team, that specific research and rescue mission that you're talking about was as a result of the Cabinet's direct intervention to say to the NADMA operatives that notwithstanding that they themselves may have been affected, that we need to ensure that we go out and the minister himself go out and rescue the elders that were entrapped and on the ground in Caracu and Pitiamatni. And I must say that there was an element of a bit of stubbornness to some because we went to some people in Wynwood. The gentleman lost his entire roof, but he did not want to leave. And so it was this affinity to his home. So we had to understand that. But we did try to, you know, return, follow up, et cetera. And so the challenge, Grenada on a whole as well. When Hurricane Ivan struck, essentially, it was clear to every Grenadian. Because my family sent down a generator and I had to receive the generator even today since Hurricane Ivan. But it was clear to everyone that from a response capacity, that Grenada, even from Ivan to even Barrel, was just not there. So let me tell you what we did in this last budget. We have now included a fee to pay district NADMA coordinators, pay them. This thing about volunteering is a thing of the past. You need paid people who can help and assist to mobilizing and responding to post disasters whenever they strike. So that is now included. And the Honorable Prime Minister had the vision to include that. The second element is that the structure of NADMA is now transitioned into a statutory board. Not just some little department in a ministry, but a statutory board that can be able to effectively build the resources and respond to disasters, whatever they are. And so the need for us now to get your input from the diaspora, because I am certain some of you have seen greater disasters than Hurricane Barrel and may have some element of understanding. What are the things that we need to do, although we are small back home, to help enhance our capacity to be able to respond? But I can tell you this, that that Caracu-Pitiamatni experience is one, while it's for the record books, but one that this administration in particular has learned and has been able to put concrete steps and plans of actions in place to be able to mitigate in future disasters.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? I'm not hearing from this side of the room now. What happened to Marvin?
Good evening, everyone. It's not barrel-related, but it's a healthcare question. I have a question regarding amputations on the island. We have a lot of diabetics at home. And before they, as soon as they get a wound or an area, instead of us trying to heal that area, we amputate. We don't look at the patients, what they did before, how they were, you know, how they were able to get around before, but we just like to amputate. I think we should try to change the focus and focus more on healing these wounds instead of amputating people's limbs. Because we can't even get prosthetic legs at home. So they have no way of getting around. So that's my... What'd you say? So that is my issue.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ron, you want to say?
All right, so, yeah, and that's true. But you know, just like COVID-19, before I respond directly to the question, the health of an individual must be, first and foremost, I believe, a personal responsibility, as one. But hear me out. It is not a child question or observation. The Honorable Prime Minister last year, I don't recall the exact date right now, but visited the island of Cuba and was able to see first-hand the treatment that Cuba has developed for treating ulcers, this whole question of amputation, et cetera. And did announce that we may tap into it. Now, I want to be politically correct, so I don't want to say anything that could get us into trouble. But the need for the region to improve its capacity in health-related preventative methods is critical. Because we do not have the resources to be able to treat with some of the larger diseases, chronic diseases, illnesses, et cetera. Now, we have to almost respond to most of these. We have to remember, the capacity of the general hospital in Grenada, the capacity of the district medical stations in Grenada needs to be improved. But if the workers are working in deplorable conditions, if the nurses ain't getting paid, if they're not permanent, of course, no, 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 they ain't taking no chicken, I could guarantee that. We ain't supporting that. We stand for our nurses and our doctors. But if they are not being adequately compensated, then the question of responding to some of these illnesses becomes an afterthought because they are more, almost consumed with the difficulties that they have for themselves. And so this administration took a deliberate step. One, to ensure that we compensated the nurses and doctors. Five hundred dollars nurses, one thousand dollars doctors, honorarium. But we didn't just stop at the honorarium, but we continued it. And hopefully, the aim and intention is to increase their pay permanently so that it becomes a permanent fixture. The second thing is that with the regularization process that is currently ongoing with the Department of Public Administration, the expectation is that we are going to, in 2025, regularize nurses and some of the other auxiliary medical staff. This, we believe, in addition to the management team that has been put in place to be able to manage, one, the transition of the general hospital... to be able to manage, one, the transition of the general hospital into a statutory entity. And folks, I want to say this, that the law was very clear and deliberate for the general hospital. The general hospital, as is now, is not in conformity with the legislation that is backing it. Meaning that it was passed, the general hospital was supposed to be statutoryized many moons ago, and they have not done so. This administration has now laid out on the table and will be doing this by the end of 2025. What this will do is to begin the process to lift the quality and standard. The VICE approach, the approach which says, that is not my business, government go pay for that, et cetera. That has to be a thing of the past. But it is going beyond what we currently have because where the current hospital is situated, there are some challenges. You have the whole question of the sea blast, which is rusting all of the stainless steel equipment, et cetera. So when you take your hard-on cash or you mobilize your family and so on, you donate some of these things, they are ultimately destroyed, unfortunately so, because of where this hospital is located. So we are moving and constructing a new state-of-the-art project, Polaris Hospital. We have already secured the lands in Calavini, and the intention is that we are going to have the question of below the capacity for medical tourism. So your concern is deeply rooted in the concern all of us have. I lost my grandmother at the general hospital, and I lost my father at the general hospital. No, it was under the former administration and note well, I didn't play politics with it, but it was very hurtful. When, well, the year before, the government changed, almost lost my son. So that one I say I ain't having it. So I remember meeting with the pediatric team at the time, I served as a senator, and we were able to get some clear directives and understanding, and they worked magic. That's why I always often say that oftentimes, when you have difficulties and debts at the general hospital, it is due to complications. It is not always a deliberate act of neglect. And so it comes back to the original point, we have to take responsibility for our health. But I agree with your observation, and we are working on it. Thank you very much. Yeah, just, let me just make a point, make a point, right? Let me two points. Because I was speaking to a mother some days ago, who said that her daughter, who studied in ASU, was planning to come back to Grenada to assist in the healthcare sector. But no, she's coming, she's coming to the US instead. Why? Because she understands that the doctors get paid three thousand dollars per month. So imagine having to go and study years. I mean, I studied business four years. But really studying to be a doctor is more, and the cost is a lot more. So one of the reasons why we had to start to raise the hospital, because we need to enhance the pay for our doctors and nurses. That's number one. Number two, the plan for a teaching hospital was there by the previous NDC administration since 1995. Since 1995, the plan for a teaching hospital was there. Imagine we have St. George's University, one of the top universities in the world. Our healthcare sector is suffering like this. It's a shame. It's a shame. So what we are doing is not just building a new hospital. No, we are building a teaching hospital. So that when these students have to go abroad and do their practicals, you can do it in Grenada. What's the result? The result is that we can have the experience, or we can have the services of these students who are going abroad to do their practicals. And we can benefit from that as a country and as a nation. So I'm saying, there are times, yes, we understand, and healthcare is not where it's supposed to be. But just think about it. It's difficult to fix, as I said in the speech, something that has been broken for over 20 years, 30 years, fix it in two years, two and a half years. It's impossible. But it means that we have work to do, and we will try. As Gary said, the difficult will take a little longer and impossible something, but we will try, right? But if you ask me, in building the new hospital, we are also engaging the people who's coming to build to also work on the existing one. Because a new hospital wouldn't take one year to build or two years to build. So why are we working on the new? We are working on the existing one, so our people can benefit. That's the plan.
We have people in the back here? Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen. Or say, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Mitchell, Canadian, whiteboard. It's the first time meeting you guys. Yes, the good Mitchell. It's no question, I have no question, but I just want to commend you guys for the good work that you all are doing. I've been following you guys on Facebook and everything. You're very popular. I love that. This one I do not know, but keep doing the good work that you guys are doing. God bless you.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Hold on. These guys miserably.
Hi, good night, everyone. I just want the ministers... I'm not speaking hard enough. Good night, everyone. I would less like the ministers to reiterate, when you say a teaching hospital and use the word there that not everybody understand, please let them know that the Calavini Hospital, they will also have to have their card and pay at that hospital. Is it a free hospital? Okay, this is the thing. No, this is the thing, right? That's one. And my next thing is that Mr. Redhead had said, just like how they, Nwasa is being regulated because they were regulating themselves. I have always said that in Grenada, when I go there, or we all go, a case of beer is the same price as a case of water. Right? I always say this, you notice, and I want to know why. So I said, the water is coming straight from the springs for free. Caribbean has to employ a whole company, right? Why it is we're seeing the same price of water and beer? So people choose to spend money on a case of beer and buy water in Grenada. Right? Yes, they do. Right? Right? Next? Yes. I'm not talking loud enough. And my... Okay, and the next thing that we are speaking about is the fact that Mr. Andy was saying that they're going to start construction on the new bridge in October, which is rainy season. Right? So the... The Balkazar Bridge, right? Which is rainy season. So I just was thinking that, you know, just think about it, that we could push it up a little, even if it's just the digging part of it, because that's what you need when you're going to start, just saying.
Okay, I'm going to come one minute?
The question I want to ask is the jet bridge. How soon is the jet bridge going to be ready? So when I come off the plane, my hair is not going to get wet? That's my question. I've been campaigning for that jet bridge since Keat was in power, so it's very important to me. People with long hair.
Thank you.
So I wouldn't answer Balkazar, nor the jet bridge, norly. But let me just answer the question about the water and the... Well, the simple answer is volume. Now, the thing about it is, you said that people choosing to buy beer than water. The government could only reach so far in terms of people's private life. That is one. However, going back to the same point, we need to start taking responsibility. But the state has an obligation too, to encourage the question of community health education. And the good sister just reminded me of that because I think that is an important element to the whole question of healthcare. We are not just saying, build a new hospital and everything will be okay. But we, as a collective, have a responsibility to contribute to our collective health in the country. And so I often choose either to drink a malt over a beer. But I do patronize, I mean, let's be honest here. However, however, you have an obligation to, to take your personal health as your responsibility. And so my message would be, because Grenada is known for a lot of good things, but one of the things that we think there is an area of concern with is the question of alcohol consumption. The government cannot just unilaterally intervene in something like that. You need different elements of society, the community. The community centers need to start educating our people on consumption patterns. And that, again, will take some time. But generally, you raised a very good observation. We consume too much alcohol, and then we go to the general hospital and we say, they're killing us, they're doing other things, when we ourselves need to start taking responsibility for our health. Right, so when it comes to healthcare, when it comes to healthcare, let me just explain something. I want to, I want you to get it tonight, right? I want you to get it. Even before you go to the hospital, you have the primary healthcare, the community centers, the medical centers. And what we are doing, starting from next month, MIT, the Ministry to Get Things Done, and the Ministry of Health will be working, starting a program, working to tackle the issues at all the medical centers. If we can strengthen the medical centers, we also have a project called the OCS Regional Health Project. And that project, again, is aimed at strengthening and increasing capacity at the medical centers. If we can better the services and improve the standard at the community level medical centers, it means that we can limit the amount of patients that gets to the hospital. Number one. Number two, the hospital will be a statutory body. And we will have, it will be coupled with NHI, National Health Insurance. There was a company before who was working on it since the last administration time, and we thought it was taking too long. So we ended the contract, and now we will have someone else coming in to provide the service for us. The idea is that when we have the hospital, when we start to raise the hospital, we need to pay for the services, and the National Health Insurance will cover that, right? And that's the essence of it. So, so that's the whole idea. Number one, we tried to limit the amount of people that goes there by strengthening the health centers. If you look in my constituency, the medical center in Granans, in the south, which is, which has the most people in its constituency, we have a downstairs for a medical center. Right? Somebody apartment downstairs is our medical center. Now, what I've done, we had the old license center building in Dusty Ari. That building was affected by Ivan. It was left to be dilapidated. When you go inside, it was a dump. So the whole building, the front of the building, that's where the police and so will have you come and do the exam for your written. And then when you go inside, in the back of the building, the inside of it, like here. Okay, so like this small room there is where the police use. And this whole building here, in the back here, was just old stuff. Right? Old machine, old this, old that, vagrants coming, the all kind of thing. So what we did is that I brought the minister of elder, we cleaned it up, we took out all the stuff. We covered the roof, right? We, right now we are working on the windows. But the idea is to refurbish the building. It's a big building, what a five thousand square feet. It's a big building. And what we can do now is to move the... It's healthcare, it's skills training, it's housing, and it's energy. But healthcare is number one. And you see us having something called a deficit budget by the opposition, making a big thing about. And I'll explain that because I wouldn't leave you to wonder what a deficit budget is. But, and that's because we see the need to invest in certain places in Grenada. As I said, healthcare, education, housing, and energy. If you want to do CEO business in Grenada, we have to look at the cost of energy. It is just too expensive. Number one. Number two, you have children going to school, and everyone is being taught the same thing. When somebody on... And I keep doing the same thing over and over again. It has to change, yeah? So that is why, now, let me explain what some what is called a deficit budget because, since I mentioned it, I want to explain it. Now, in the last budget presentation, we were speaking about that. We had a big debate in parliament. And I'm someone who will tell it to you straight. I don't believe in fooling the people. I tell it to you straight what it is. So when I see people playing games with people, I cannot get offended, you know, I feel that way. Because sometimes you don't know better, and someone will just come and just feed you with something. So according to how the government works, the government income and you have expenses. When you manage the expenses from the income, then you will get a current surplus or deficit. In our case, our income that we expect was more than the expenses. So we had a current account sub eight six point five million dollars. What that means, let me explain to you what that means. Inspector, Elaine was Gilbert, if you're working and you're making five thousand dollars a month, but your expense, your rent, your food, your gas, everything, if it comes up to two thousand dollars a month, it means that your revenue is five thousand, but your expense is two thousand. Therefore, you are making a surplus of three thousand dollars a month. But if for a year, three thousand by twelve months is thirty-six thousand. So the year you will make an income of thirty-six thousand dollars. That's your current account surplus for the year. But if you say you want to invest in capital expenditure. Capital expenditure means a house, a car, something of a capital nature. It means now, if you want to get a house for a hundred thousand dollars for the year, you will be having a deficit because your income for the year is thirty-six thousand. But your expense for the house is a hundred thousand. It means that you will be making a overall deficit of sixty-four thousand dollars. That means now, if you go to the bank, you will get a loan. You know why? Because you have the ability to pay. It means that, let's say you pay back the hundred thousand dollars. It means that, let's say you pay back the $100,000. It will take you three years to pay back for it. And after that, you continue to have your surplus again. So that's all what happens. So the fact that you are making your, your, your revenue or your income is able to meet your recurring expenditure means that you are making a current account surplus and that's what's important. Now, if you want to invest in the country, to, to uplift the country now, you must invest in CapEx or it's called capital expenditure. That's what it is. So I just wanted to explain that.
Thank you. We have some people over here.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen. And when I ask question, people like to ask me why didn't ask Kate Mitchell that. Please don't ask me that today. And that's my good partner here, we go way back. When I compose, he used to be the man writing in the back of the album, eating better and everything, good man. Something happened recently and, and it could happen to any one of us. And I follow it a lot. I don't know if the government heard about it. And for the people who don't know, I go mention it so you could be careful. Um, there is a woman from Barbados. She went to Barbados with two passport, a Bediarian passport and her citizenship. I think when she came back here, they took her passport from her, that's the US passport, and they sent her back. Now, I personally does do it. A lot of Grenadians just do it. So I just mentioning it in case the government heard about it. So if it's illegal, we could be careful because I telling you something to work harder for a US passport is not easy. Yeah, who know, well know. Yeah, and the majority of us had your citizenship. So I just mentioning it. For those who never heard about it, you have to be careful, yeah? Or something more into it than just that? Because I find, yes, if he has something more into it, I don't know, but I wanted to mention it because I myself had your citizenship. Thank you.
Okay. Um, hang on, hang on, hang on. Take it down a bit.
Um, I just have a question for Inspector, right? Um, Inspector, one question for you. Why didn't ask Kate Mitchell that?
Hold on, hold on, hold on a minute. Come on.
I don't have a, a question, but could you permit me to make a statement? Okay. Now, I applied this new government for the things that they have done in the past two and a half years. They did a lot. I want to say another thing. The Bible said to love your enemy, but it never said to strengthen your enemy. I don't see no part in this saying strengthen your enemy. And what I think this new government is doing, instead of, they're not only loving the enemy, but they're strengthening the enemy. And the enemy, this strength, the enemy taking and beating back with it and is not a good thing. In my view, is not a good thing. Now, what are you, what are your advice? The advice I could have for all you this new government, the MP that in the different village, instead of giving the opposition the $10,000, double it with the other MPs so they could do more because they is all our people. That's number one. Number two, all you're spending $120,000 to the opposition that not doing nothing a year. So all you're doing $600,000 in five years, then all you're doing $3 million between the whole five of them, including Peter, for the same five years, $3 million. You all know what $3 million could do in Grenada, Karakua and Piti Matne? Why are you doing that? Are you so nice for that? Kate Mitchell never nice. Kate Mitchell give them $1,200, that's what he been getting for the rest of their life. Kate Mitchell giving these people $300, that's what he been giving them. I look giving them $500 and they think $500 is, is less than $300. They're still talking about the $300 when I look at them five because he poisoned the mind already. And I want to give all you a little story of a woman, a, a woman, she have two girl children. All you have this good program, free tuition program. You know what the woman said? I'm not sending my two girl children this program because it's a NDC program. A woman said that. Kate poisoned her mind already. So I asking all you, the NDC new government, to change our strategy and take away this money away from them, go into Parliament, put a law, all you could take back the money. Also, don't give them no new car, here you give them new cars, don't give them new new cars to travel all over because they will bunks down all you with it. That's not, that's the thing, they will bunks all you with it next. Okay? So that's my advice for all you, this young NDC, wonderful, vibrant, smart people. Keep doing what you are doing and have all your heads up and don't strengthen all your enemy because enemy is enemy and enemy would not change but all you could love them.
So, uh, lovely point, lovely point, lovely point. But I want to tell you all this, right? I want to tell you all this. That's not how government works. Now, if we are trying to be, practice tribal politics, yes, we can do that. But that's not how government works. You have the Parliament, you have the MP offices. You cannot give nine or 10 and don't give the others, right? That's the law. So we cannot say because it's opposition, we want to kill them, so let me do it. No, that's not how it works. Though we understand politically, you may want that, right? We may, we may want it too, but that's not how it works. If, it doesn't matter who is there, if you are giving the MP offices $10,000 a month, you have to give all, you cannot give some and don't give the others, right? You cannot do it, number one. Number two, but as NDC supporters, what is the problem? These people have millions of dollars up to 2022 and they still love the election. So what is care about, right? What is care about, right? That's number two. Number three, folks, yes, we may be young, but we also have to be wise in our doing. We understand as supporters, you want us to kill them, but we have, no, yes, 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 hold on, but it's not that we are naive. We have to follow the law of the land. If, if we do, if we do otherwise, if we do otherwise, we will not be following the law of the land. Do you want us to, do you want us to break the law? Right? In the, in the whole thing of saying let's cripple them, that's not the way. You see, that's not the way. And every month, every month, all of us have to account to the Parliament on how we spend the money. If we do not account to the Parliament, we will not get. In September, I don't have the time, or my, my office manager, they, they, they don't have the time to fill up the report, we did not get. No problem. Let's, let's do it in order, folks, let's do it in order. This is not, we are not having a, you know, let's do it in order. Now, the fact that the Prime Minister did not get, it's, it's, it's a technical, sorry, a technical issue with the Finance Department in the Ministry of Finance and the Prime Minister, which he, which they told him he needed certain requirements to get the funds. And he's, and he said according to the law, he don't need that, right? So that's the case. It's not a case where someone trying to spy the Prime Minister. So let me just clear the air on that. You know, sometimes, folks, we, you know, we can't get too caught up emotionally with the politics that we tend to do things that may not make sense and may not benefit the whole country as a whole, yeah? So, so as government ministers, even though you're not in, you're not an MP, we have in our social development budget over $500,000. I'm an MP, I have the $10,000 a month, but I have over, I have $500,000 in the Ministry of Social Development that I can access to help my people. I have over a million dollars in the Ministry of Social Development to help with housing and bathroom and toilet. The opposition does not have that. So I'm saying, you, okay, you're, you're looking at 10, 10,000 a month, but we have more than 10 times that, that we can impact the people of Grenada, Karakua and Piti Matne that they don't have. So I mean, we have to put it in perspective and let's not just get carried away because you want to cripple somebody because sometimes you try to cripple someone and you get crippled in the process. So be wise. Right. Very well said, Minister. And I just want to add, colleagues, let me just say this and say this loud and clear. I think in June 2022, we ushered in a new era, a new generation. And it's time to change our mindset and live the standard of politics in Grenada, Karakua and Piti Matne. That is one. Two, the gentleman did raise some very important observations, but as Minister is saying, were we to continue this tribal politics? I am telling you, we're not going anywhere. What I want to implore upon the New York chapter is to continue to call on the opposition members of Parliament to account openly on how they are spending the $10,000. That is a obligation that they have, not just to us as government, but to the Parliament and the people that they represent. And so it must not be a concern of not giving them the money, they must account for the $10,000. And so if we use that method and mechanism, we could be able to get the objective that we need. That is one. Two, we need to ensure that when we implement policies, we are not only doing it on the basis of NDC and NNP. And let me tell you what I mean by that. Notwithstanding the representatives who are elected in the four, well, it's four now? Thing real bad, but in the four constituencies of the opposition. Notwithstanding that they are opposition means that they do not have people who have difficulties, who do not need assistance with medication, means that they do not have people in the constituencies that need help. And so the obligation and responsibility of the Parliament to a member of Parliament is to be able to provide the ability to meet in that initial sense, some of those assistances and requests that constituents give. So this policy essentially is about people. The Honorable Prime Minister, when he came in, said that he was shocked that a member of Parliament under the former administration got absolutely nothing directly and the meager salary was what they would use to buy the medication, to assist Mary Jane, to assist Tom Jones and to assist people in the constituency. So no wonder why they had to go and set up companies, no wonder why they had to go and do all kinds of things because there was no system. This administration under two years changed that and ensured that we budgeted some resources that Parliament could be able to allocate that $10,000. So we must never put politics in it because this essentially is about people. The second point that I want to make is on the basis of vehicles. Now, I hear all you and the government here all you. So what we are saying, however, is that this is about serving the community. It's not to give me or the opposition members of Parliament a vehicle to add to the asset Again, continue to call on them to account, continue to call on them to do their work. And if they can't do the job, whenever the general election is called, you know what to encourage your family and friends in the various constituencies to do. However, we must provide every constituency with the opportunity to serve or for the members of Parliament to serve their constituencies. So we have to be realistic about this. This is a gentleman's conversation. So forget that they are opposition, let's focus on whether or not the constituency is adequately serviced and what are the needs to be able to service the constituency. And so if we start to get into the realm of choosing and picking and choosing, that is going back to the past and we are in the present, but we aim to move forward. We do not want to repeat the mistakes of the past because 20 years later, those selfish mistakes and choosing who get what and so on is turning out to haunt us. So let us focus on moving forward. So we accept, ladies and gentlemen, we accept that everybody would not be in full support of all members of Parliament getting the allowance and the vehicles. However, that is the power of the people. We have a responsibility to serve and leaders do not quiver and cower at the sign of every dissent. What we have to do is to say to you genuinely how we see this. This is not about the A member of Parliament or a party, this is about the people in the various constituencies who need to serve. And then when a good member of Parliament emerges in those constituencies, that same vehicle, that same $10,000 a month will be able to be utilized to help the people in those areas and we hope as a NDC member of Parliament.
Thank you, thank you. Um, all good things must come to an end and I'm gonna, I'm gonna give, hold on one second, I'm going to give everybody a chance to network with the ministers who, Mr. Andy is going on to Canada and I don't want to be unreasonable. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank you, um, the, all of you who came out here today and who gave generously to us. We've collected by the hat donation about $700, so give yourself a round of applause for that. Thank you, thank you. The NDC New York cap thanks you profusely. Uh, Minister, uh, Mr. Williams, Brother Ron, thank you for this fine conversation. It's long in coming. I hope that this is going to continue over a period of time. I'm asking you on, on behalf of the people. And I'm going to now hand it, hand it over to Chair Cox so he can close us out. So you will get a chance. Oh, the ladies in the back is going to kill me if I didn't say it. There is a potato pudding for sale in the back. I think it's 20 bucks for the tray. You can, you're guys laughing at me. Um, yeah, so you can, at the back, you can see the ladies at the back, there's potato pudding, there's food there. Uh, let me hand, let me hand back now to Chair Nick Cox so he can close us out. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Brother Mike. Um, yeah, there's some, there's little cake and so on in the plates and I think they're free, but I understand that there's potato pudding for sale. That's a premium stuff in New York. Right, we want to thank the excess of 300 people that were viewing online. Thank you for taking the time to listen and understand what's happening and understand what type of government we have in Grenada now. It's not the government of the past with victimization and being vindictive and so on, but it's a government for the people. We put people first, that's one of our slogans, putting people first regardless of what constituency you live in. So anyhow, um, so this come to the end, we started a little late, we went some extra time to ensure that everybody gets a good chance to interact with the MPs. And just to close it off, we'll hear from Brother Andy.
Thank you very much. So as we near the end of what has been a truly enriching and productive town hall meeting, I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of you who joined us here today. Whether you are... Whether you have been in New York for years or just arrived recently, your presence here is a testament to the strength, unity and spirit of the Grenadian people. When I look around this room, I see just more than faces. I see a community, a family and Grenadians who, no matter what our real life has taken us, have never lost our connection to one another and to our homeland. You are the bridge between Grenada and the world. And the connection is something we must cherish and nurture. I want to leave you with some thoughts about unity because as founding leaders have shown us, it is through unity that we can overcome any obstacle and achieve the progress we seek. Mois Bishop, one of Grenada's greatest leader, once said, "We are all bound together by the same principle of love and respect for each other. And we must always strive to work together to make our country a better place for all." And when we talk about progress, let us remember the words of Sir Eric Mathugh Gary, who once said, "We must always strive to build a better, more prosperous nation by working with dedication and commitment to the ideals of freedom, democracy and justice." Before we close, I want to once again express my deepest gratitude for your participation, your voices, your input and your presence are incredibly valuable. I also want to remind you of the power we hold when we stand together. We may be separated by distance, but our connection to Grenada is unbreakable. As we close tonight, I leave you with one last thought from Mois Bishop, who said, "The people of Grenada have the capacity to shape their own destiny. The power is in your hands." Let us remember that that power is not just about politics. It is about community. It's about working together, supporting one another and building the Grenada we all dream of. Thank you, New York, for your continued support, your passion and your dedication. Together, we will continue to make Grenada a beacon of hope, prosperity and unity for generations to come. Safe travels home. I look forward to continuing this journey with all of you. But first, I'm a fool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. So get home safe for everyone. For some of the young strong men in the back who took chairs and placed it in different locations, we'd like you to return it to the spot where you get it, where you got it so that um the landlords would be happy in the morning, take a piece of cake on the way out, buy some potato pudding and um listen to this night. As they come up, follow us on Facebook, Instagram, follow our website on the internet and we always thank you for your continued support. Good night.